Good morning, it's Wednesday, May 31st. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now with me, our Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, we ask for your knowledge, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your guidance, to do your business and people, God, that we can provide what services need to be provided, God, and do the things that need to be done for our community or county, and God, do all the things that you've asked us to do as elected officials, and Father, we just thank you for these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Do we have any correspondence or organizational business to report?
Not at this point.
All right, do we have any public comment today?
Not at this time.
This brings us to our consent agenda, which today would include considering approving the meeting minutes for our May 24th meeting, claim vouchers in the amount of $436,765.81, and payroll for the period of April 21st through May 20th in the amount of $1,064,074.50. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Our first item of business is consider entering into an agreement for professional services with Bartlett &amp; West.
Yeah, as part of the proximity park project, as you all know very well, we've agreed to improve the season in Montana roads, we've hired Bartlett &amp; West, among other things, to design services for that project. During that process of designing the improvements, we discovered that there is a rural water district line that runs through an area that we need for our improvements, thus necessitating movement of the line. In talking with Jim, we tried and explored several options, we met with the rural water district and asked them, because I believe there are only two properties served by the line that we need to move. We asked them if basically we could buy out the properties by their customers, so to speak, and they weren't interested in that. We worked for quite a while with the city on seeing if, because the city is putting water lines in the industrial park, if we could tap into those lines, but for various reasons that the county engineer would understand better than me, that didn't end up as feasible options, so it appears as if just movement of the line outside of what we need for a rideaway is the most feasible option at this juncture. It's before, while this is an industrial park expense, it's before you because it is roughly $175,000 that when we originally, you know, started this project, you were unaware of, so I would recommend entering into this agreement with Bartlett because we're utilizing them for every other engineering service and industrial park related, if they're familiar with the project. Jim, if there are gaps that you wish to fill in, certainly.
No, I think you covered it very well.
Why can't, why can't we utilize city water lines?
Be difficult to keep track of the water, you would be tying into the north end to serve their dead end line towards 15th Street, you would also have to meter it at the south because the line eventually winds up at their water tower.
I have a couple of questions. You said $175,000 for this project, what, what's that on Bartlett &amp; West, what are we doing with them? I mean, is this on top of the $175,000 for their?
Yes, sir, it's included as part of the estimate.
Okay, that'll be for their?
There's also $10,000 for acquiring the necessary easements for the water line, and there's also contingencies.
So what are we talking for the Bartlett &amp; West part of it?
Uh, $33,000.
$33,000.
That includes, according to the contract, that includes the construction observation?
In other words, Commissioner Howard, this, this $175 was meant to be the all-in price, including contingencies that may or may not turn out to exist, so it could in theory be lower than that, but rideaway acquisition, engineering, construction, everything for $175, or hopefully up there.
This contract is for $33,000.
So this is what we're into today will be the $33,000?
Yes, sir. $13,500 for the design phase, $3500 for bidding and negotiation, and $16,000 for construction administration.
Chair Weymeyer, you do have one public comment on this item.
Is it Gene? Good, come on up, Gene. You're aware of the public comment policy? Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I'm glad Rick brought up that, that cost, because I see these costs here myself. 6,000 feet of, of pipe for the price, how long, how long, how long is this? I mean, where is this? That much length of pipe for that price? Really? Well, who, I have a feeling I know which one of the landowners won't let you do nothing, and I'm not sure where the line goes through out there or will be put different, that's Ted Fogel. Now, he's had problems with the city already on that because of the way they're gonna do 59 Highway out there, where he, he won't have access into his property. And so, I'm concerned about that, I mean, that's a lot of money, just for, wasn't planned, is what I'm hearing here. God, $170,000? You know, I, I see the cost here, I, contingency cost of over $11,000? What, what are some of these costs? I'd like to have the cost explained if I could, because it goes down through here and tells you all the individual costs, I would like that. So, you know, if I don't get it, then fine, I guess you guys are spending a lot more money in this area now, getting right, started right off, thank you.
I understand that, is Bartlett &amp; West's figures based on a percentage of that estimated cost, or is it just based on their design, I mean, their design cost, they had a pretty flat fees, whatever, and that and so forth? Obviously, all the other costs associated with this are all an estimate, and I'm sure their estimates are based on recent figure stuff, but I noticed the easement acquisition, which, again, we're getting maybe away from the contract of Bartlett &amp; West, but I'm surprised there's a fee for that. But I have, I have no objection whatsoever for the fees to Bartlett &amp; West to, to submit the design, that'll have to be done, and we gotta, we gotta move the water line on that road, so I don't, I don't have an issue with any of that.
Well, and, and Jim, if your understanding's different, Stephen, I'm not sure that easement acquisition is meant to be the cost of actually acquiring the easement, like, I don't think that's a $10,000 fee on top of that cost, I think the $10,000 goes to the cost, like, that is what we will literally purchase the easement with.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
To a fee for doing that at that place.
Well, when you're feeding a water line to someone whose land, this land is not the person getting the water, makes a difference. When, when you run a water line, a lot of times everybody, nobody gets paid for the easements because you're gonna get one of the water meters, but in this case, if it's somebody else's land who's not getting a water meter, but that just costs, that's, that's, like I said, that's a different ballgame, it's nothing to do with Bartlett &amp; West, moving that water line, which we have to do to move the road, to widen the road, so there, there's just not an alternative there apparently.
Well, and certainly, yes, with everything we do, I mean, we'll try and negotiate, you know, if, certainly, I, I would anticipate some of the landowners just allowing that to happen, but I, how many and who, I can't state until we actually get into that, but I didn't want to undercut this, so we included it in there.
Sure.
You guys could see what is hopefully a worst-case scenario.
As far as that process, it's something we do regularly, especially whenever we replace bridges or?
Sure.
Straighten out corners or? All right, and this should be paid for out of the bonded, uh, money eventually?
Yes, that is the intention.
We may float it.
Our closing date, um, on the seven and a half million, I believe, is July 6th, and given that we're tomorrow, we're into June, I, I'm not sure that we will receive any kind of significant bill on this until we have.
Sure. At this point, it's just engineered estimates on here, isn't that correct?
As far as the cost of the project, yes.
So it's got to go out for bid, and we'd have an actual cost? All right. Well, is there a motion to approve entering to, into an agreement for professional services with Bartlett &amp; West?
I make a motion, we approve the agreement to Bartlett &amp; West.
Is there a second?
I don't think we have really much option at this point, so I will second it.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Second item of business is considering entering into an agreement for services with Susan Rader.
Yeah, your meeting on May 17th, I'm sure you'll remember, you directed me that this point, you didn't want to re-up the contract with the Chamber, and you wanted to look at bringing tourism services in-house and then creating an department. We have been working diligently on that since May 17th and have frankly made a lot of headway, I feel like we're in a great place with Susan, we've had two members of our human resources staff out at the CBB, or out, out at the Visitor's Center, shadowing her and getting a better understanding of how she spends her current time, we're looking at other communities and seeing those who have brought it in-house, what their job descriptions look like, how they function, we're getting close to having a job description for her, once we have a job description, we'll be able to better look at rate of compensation and really kind of put the puzzle entirely together. Dustin has been working on the IT portion of it, and we're getting that rounded into form, but I feel like we're in a very good place. Having said that, our contract with the Chamber literally ends today, this is the last day of the contract, and I certainly would not expect Susan to sit out there without any kind of arrangement for compensation, we're just not ready to bring her in-house yet to make her that employment offer, we anticipate doing it, so my solution is just a 30-day temporary agreement, you have the agreement in front of you, to the extent you have questions, certainly, I would take them, posing that we pay her $3,000, we arrived at that figure, Gala and I, her salary currently with the Chamber was $32,000, divide that by 12, that gets you just under $2,700. The Chamber was also paying her benefits, health insurance, we are not doing that in this interim period, so in order to compensate for that difference, we bumped it from $27, roughly, to $3,000, and then of course, when we bring her in-house, she will receive the same benefits that Jim, myself, and every other county employee receives, so if you have questions about the agreement.
Takes a little time to create a position, doesn't it?
I do have a quick question, not, not actually about this agreement, but was there any money that will be coming back that was, that Chamber had already received, or?
Um, we're working with John on that, I do believe there will be some that does get refunded, and I was gonna give a staff report on some of this, and I'm going to talk about it now, one of the outstanding projects is the 2017 Visitor's Guide, and the Chamber took the reins on that, they retained the company to do it, the company has already sold advertising for the guide, company's now concerned about this transition, they've already taken money from people wishing to advertise, I think the best course of action at this juncture is to just let the Chamber finish it out, I don't think it's gonna require any TGT funds, because the revenues are generated based on the advertisements, so I don't think we're out any TGT money, but that, that keeps the company that the Chamber retained happy, because it's effectively, nobody is changing the terms of any agreement, so the stipulation will be, of course, that the Chamber will continue to utilize Susan, so that certainly, because she's been working on this, that she continues to have a voice in it, but that is really the big outstanding item, and I want to make sure that you all are okay with that.
All right. Any other questions on the agreement for services with Susan? Would anyone like to make a motion to enter into the agreement?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gene has a public comment.
All right, good, Gene?
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Promona. Well, I feel that Susan is very more than capable of taking care of this position, I really think she will. I don't agree, I mean, in my mind, you know, you want her to work for you for $3,000 for 30 days, well, what about if she has to go out with her vehicle or something, are she gonna be compensated for all her expenses for going out by those 30 days that she's gonna be compensated for? You're not gonna give her no medical or, or insurance or anything for that 30 days? I don't think that's appropriate, not least in my, my life needs of compensating people when they go in there for 30 days like this, so I guess, to me, I think she should be, I think something should be given extra if she has to do something extra other than the $4,000 she's supposed to do, thank you.
Is there anybody else, huh?
Susan, you're happy with this agreement?
I, I hope that everything is quickly resolved, I'm, you know, I'm on the second loop of the roller coaster, and I hope that I get off the ride quick as possible here, and I look forward to continuing all the great things that we do in this community.
You happy with the end goal of becoming county employee and?
I think that would be a great fit.
Okay, good. All right, is there a motion to approve entering into the agreement?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Third item of business is consider for approval the reappointment of the Franklin County Appraiser, Philip Dudley.
Yeah, we have discussed this at a prior meeting, and we're out ahead of this by about a month, which is perfectly okay, Phil's current employment agreement ends at the end of June, and we discussed Philip's performance, and Phil does a good job, we've worked with him a lot, and it always seems to go very well, so certainly, I, I, I think appointing him to another four-year term is appropriate. Now, with regard to the agreement, again, I stand for any questions you have, I want to talk with you a little bit about the rate of compensation, and, and obviously, I kept it in here, so I'm okay with that, but I want you to make an informed decision on that. There's $75,000 in the contract, if, with Philip, is due a merit raise and a cost of living raise in July as well, if we just provide that to him, his rate of pay would be $72,500, so there is about a $2,500 premium on this contract. Now, I think one of the very, very few advantages of being a contracted employee is at the end of your contract, it is up for renegotiation, so I think it's a perfectly appropriate request. I have looked at four other counties of a similar size, and I've also got the appraisers' years of experience in that position. Again, in looking at this, I do not think Philip's request is outlandish, the Butler County Appraiser, who has four years less experience than Phil, is making almost $78,000, so that would be about three grand more than where Phil's at, Potawatomi County, got a little more experience than Philip, but they're at 73, Dickinson County's at 71, Saline County, and they only have a year and a half of experience, but they're down around 66, so Philip, who has eight years' experience with us, is kind of right in the middle of all that, so having said that, it is above where he would otherwise be with just the, you know, the merit raise and the cost of the services. Any questions about that or any of the terms of the contract?
Now, would that $75,000 amount then turn around and, and be eligible for the COLA and merit on top of that?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, it's, it would be eligible for the, yeah, the same, same raises as all other entities, which is a common term in, in our contracts.
So that would put it pretty immediately, 76-something?
No.
The following year.
The following year.
Okay.
This $75,000 would include this year's whole year.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Derek? We discussed this, I believe, at a study session already, so I know we've gone over a lot of it, did any, do we have any public comment? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of the county appraiser?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of the Franklin County Appraiser, Philip Dudley, with the contract as specified.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Fourth item of business is consider approving soliciting bids for financing of motor grinders.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
On March 29th, you approve the purchase of two 2017 120M2 all-wheel-drive motor grinders, it's necessary to solicit, approve bids for financing those two motor grinders, solicitation will be sent to all local banks plus Foley Equipment, and a bid opening would be set for June 7th. The request is a motion approving solicitation of bids for financing two motor grinders.
Just clarify, these are still in the lease agreement, correct, that we have with Foley?
Can be leased purchase with the financing agency.
I would make a motion, we approve the solicitation of bids for the financing of the two motor grinders.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Fifth item of business is consider approval for adopting the attached Board of Trustees application for Rans Memorial Hospital.
Yes, as you very well know, Chair Weymeyer, if you're on the hospital board, you've never had a formal application process to be on that Board of Trustees, and what I put in front of you is meant to rectify that, it's nothing more than a formal application for that, to the extent, pretty simple item, to the extent you have questions about the application, by all means, Matt Heine is here today, and he could also stand for questions, this is a document that I ran through the hospital's council, and she indicated that she was okay with it, the one thing that it does not speak to, it doesn't really set out timelines, or, you know, like, once we receive an application, we'll forward it to the advisory committee by this date, we'll respond by, however, I don't think, frankly, it really needs that, we could absolutely spell it out, but I think it sets nice parameters for what the board position entails, and pretty simple, clear process.
I, well, I'm not on the board, I attend their meetings, but, yeah, and this is something we've worked with the hospital, I mean, everybody's on board, all we're doing is, is our responsibility here at this board to appoint members to the hospital board, it just formalizes and outlines the process in a very transparent way, every, like I say, everybody's on board, there are no problems, but sometimes the best, best time to do, you know, policies when there are no problems, so just, and I guess, something I brought up originally, because I am, I guess, liaison between the two boards, and having seen the process, you know, happened a few times, I kind of wondered what are the parameters, what's the framework, and I don't know that it was horribly formal, other than the fact that we appoint them, so this kind of lays it out for everybody to know how the, the process works, so, it's good preventative medicine.
I agree, I think it's very proactive, and I appreciate the effort that was put into it, so.
Matt, you want to add anything?
I know, I think it's a, for your board to be transparent, I think it's gonna allow us to get high-quality board members like we have, pat historically, and it will also allow, I think, there's a rotation of board members.
Sure, and it's a very important thing, you know, the hospital's a far larger organization than the county itself, in terms of employment and dollars and all that, so I think this budget, this form also brings in, uh, experience, education, things like that, to ensure, like you say, that we're getting good quality candidates, so.
The only question I have, Matt, are there people who are quite interested in serving on this board, or do you have trouble finding that, those people to come forward?
At this point, we have a very consistent board, which is good, and, and all, but it does create some level of stagnation too, and so we haven't ever had a problem with the existing board members wanting to continue to serve, but we also have never gone forth and solicited other individuals in the community, or really put forth the effort to solicit other individuals in the community to sit on the board, or to apply for the position to sit on the board, so I think, I think that now that we have this process more formalized, we talked about advertising it in the paper, and some about a time prior to the next board member's term expiring, or the closest board member's term expiring, and I, I would think that people would take interest in that, it's a, it's a good organization, it employs a lot of people in our community, and I don't foresee any calls getting high-quality board members.
I think it means there's some hoops to jump through, but that would also say, if you're not that interested in jumping through the hoops, then you're not gonna be a person committed to serving on our board either, so I, I think the process would be very important too.
All right. Is there a motion to approve adopting the board application?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Our sixth item of business is consider approving, approval of compensation, compensating the county clerk for her work on the 18, 2018 budget.
As you all are well aware, we're in the process of... As you all are well aware, we're in the process of putting together our twenty-eighteen budget. And I've got quite a few numbers and a little presentation to give here, I guess. But before I do, it does bear mentioning that Janet did not ask to be paid for any of her work on this. This is something that I decided to bring to you because I think fairness and equity dictate that she be compensated for the work that she has performed. When I started the process with the budget, or actually, before I even started, I reached out to her and asked her if she would assist me with that process because I, frankly, as county counselor, I had very little involvement in it. And while she didn't officially work with John in any real capacity, I, I don't believe on the budget, certainly she has access to the reports, and she was more familiar with kind of the financing side of the county's operation than I was. So, she willingly agreed to that. The more we got into it, the more other obligations fell onto my plate, the more we realized that this is kind of a beast with the tax lid this year. That, and all the literature out there about it, and all the different strategies with that, and trying to stay on top of that. It's tough when you haven't been involved in a budget, and the person who did the previous years is no longer with the organization. It's tough when you have to try to reconcile perceived oddities when you just don't know the reasoning. And so, an extraordinary amount of time has been spent doing that. So, certainly, the, the time has been put in. In terms of the number side of it, the twenty-seventeen budget includes funds for both the administrator and the counselor positions. Because at that point, when the seventeen budget was done, the positions were separate. So, the total amount budgeted was just over a hundred ninety thousand. You guys are paying me just over a hundred and thirty thousand to now do both. That leaves, it's the exact amount that is sitting there right now is fifty-eight thousand dollars, or fifty-eight thousand and some odd change. Now, part of the reason I took this position was you all decided that hiring a finance officer to assist me would be a, a, a valid and a great utilization of staff and force of action. Well, we're going to be six full months into the year, and we still don't have a finance officer. So, even if I were to hire one July first, which I can promise you will not happen, but just for the sake of the numbers, still only going to cost the county twenty-six thousand of that available fifty-eight. So, in that case, there would still be thirty-one thousand dollars that was meant to go to, well, originally, an administrator and then a finance officer that's going to sit there. I, we solicited applications for the finance officer position. There were not any that I felt would be a good fit, so we're going to go back to the drawing board, and that will be a process that you all are very involved with in terms of what we want to do, whether that's just recasting another line. But in any event, Janet is doing exactly what I would ask a finance officer to do. I mean, she's stepped in, and, and she's helping me manage the budget. Her and I have sat down, and we've went over the, the literal time that she's spent. And before I itemize that, she makes with her election fees and duties, and that's a, I understand, a changing amount, but about seventy-two thousand a year. You reduce that to an hourly rate, and you're at thirty-four sixty-one an hour. So, if that's what we're going to pay her an hour, currently, I, I think she's spent about seventy-eight hours working on the budget. About fifty-eight of those hours have come in the last three weeks. Ten hours were roughly meeting with the department heads. Her, I, and Joy sat down, met with each of them. About ten hours were spent on community partners funding. Part of the challenge with this is Janet hadn't been keeping track of her time. I mean, when we started this, I, I, we didn't really talk about compensation, so there was no reason for her to do that. So, it's taken some work to go back and figure out exactly where her time's been spent. And looking forward, there's probably another fifty or sixty hours, I would say, at the very least, that's going to need to be put into this. I mean, the real fun's going to start when we get the valuation numbers and start plugging things in and trying to make it all work and keep it under a tax lid and deciding what can stay and what can go. But thus far, I, I, I just, I cannot speak highly enough of Janet. The process has ran very, very smooth. We've gotten great feedback. We've worked very closely together on this. She's consulted with me every step of the way. To the extent executive decisions have needed to be made, I've made them. I think we've both learned a lot about the process, and I just, I'm not sure at this juncture that it frankly could have went any better than it has. And so, if we think she's worked roughly seventy-eight already, and let's say there's another fifty, it's about a hundred and thirty total hours, and her hourly rate would be about forty-five hundred dollars. We say another sixty hours, I still think is probably low. Nevertheless, about a hundred and forty total hours on the budget, that comes out to about forty-eight hundred dollars, just over that. Now, that is to say nothing about the fact that budgeting is not in her job description. I asked her to do this, and I, I think because she wants to do what's right by the organization, she understands what's on my plate, what was anticipated with the finance officer position. She willingly stepped in and did it. This has been added stress, added time. I tried to go back through my phone log to count the number of evenings that her and I have spent on the phone working through all of this, and, and that was an exercise in continuity because my phone log only goes back. I will tell you, in the last two weeks, there's been six nights anywhere where we've done this, so. And I know there have been more before that. It's something we routinely discuss after hours. I think with the data that we've got, five thousand dollars is easily justifiable. But that could also just be a platform. I mean, that's, I didn't include an amount because I think it's an amount that the board needs to decide on and set. But to the extent I can give you more information, I, I should have everything in here, so.
Just saying that. Well, going forward, Derek, what, what, what do you see us in a position in three months, six months, twelve months in regards to finance, handling the finances of the county and stuff? Is this going to be something that a county clerk's going to be involved in continuously? Is this something that you still think the position should be filled, could be filled? Or what are you planning?
I, I anticipate always having Janet involved. Now, obviously, if we hired a finance officer, her involvement would be less. But there is not a single employee in this county that I work closer with, that I trust more than Janet. So, she will always be involved in the finances, and she is the clerk. I mean, she literally has the information that I would need to perform at a high level, at least financially, so.
But above and beyond her duties, I mean, going the extra, and I'm, I'm not questioning that at all. My, my thoughts are, down the road, is this a one-time thing? Or is this something we're going to have to look at and figure out? How are we going to compensate for a continuous type of thing that's different than what has been in the past?
As of right now, well, I would propose a one-time lump sum of some sort, not an increase to her salary. Having said that, looking into the future, I, I think that's a fair question. I mean, and that's a two-way street. We might get through the end of this budget, and she might tell me never again, at which point, you can't.
Well, I'd like to comment on that. When we did the applications on the, for the administrator, we had at least one, maybe two. When we, they were asked about preparing their budgets, tell us, oh, we don't, the administrator doesn't do that. Our clerk does that. Our clerk prepares our budgets. So, it's not something that we would be throwing out there that nobody else has done or it's, it's beyond what is reasonable to ask. I, being, she has, going to have a total understanding of the budget after this is done. I would like to see us possibly adjust her salary and her take this over on a yearly deal, yearly, and prepare the budget. I don't know if that happened, if she wants to do that, but I'm not sure. Would we need a finance officer if she's preparing our budget every year?
Well, and, and if she was, and.
That's kind of.
There are a lot of things that would need to be worked out, but.
Agree.
A, a basic idea, and, and certainly Janet would, you know, I, we can't make employment plans for Janet without Janet being able to have that. But I, I will tell you that I'm not going to find an applicant for a finance officer position. I, I just won't. That's, I'm going to trust more than Janet. I mean, Janet has the institutional knowledge, the, the relationship is there, it exists. I think having Janet in that role is a fantastic idea, and would love to see it. And obviously, there are a lot of things that would need to be worked out. But just as an idea, I support it, and yeah, I, I think that would, provided that her and I and the board could agree on what those additional duties were. I think that would eliminate the need for a finance officer and would lead to what I think is a fairly dramatic cost savings. Like I said, right now, we've got fifty-eight grand sitting there that is not being put to use, so.
That, that being probably a good subject for a study session, but of course, the matter at hand is, is it fair to, to, for additional compensation?
You might say where Rodney is at, because when we talked about this originally, Rodney was going to help prepare the budget. And so, where is he in this process?
And he still is, but we're paying Rodney a fifteen-hundred-dollar fee to basically input the budget information on the state budget form to handle that process. And that's a process that he's going to coach both Janet and I through. That is, uh, I, I think, once you've done it.
But you have to get him the information to put in.
Yeah, it becomes less complex. But this first year, I think when we originally discussed it, we thought, you know, at least have a little bit of supplemental help. But yeah, the real work goes into getting that information, so.
To vastly, I guess, my experience since I've been here, to vastly oversimplify it. The budget, more or less, is a document for the administration team three months, and then for the next nine months at the clerk's office. The clerk, more or less, works with it, makes sure every, that we stick to that game plan, that funds do come from the lines that we've generally set out and that the document is followed, so. That definitely, above and beyond, and like Derek mentioned, it's not even, budget part isn't in the clerk's job description. There's definitely been more involvement and above and beyond what's required of her during this budget process than my experience in the past, so, from that position. That being said, would, I guess, five thousand was thrown out there? Is that a agreeable amount? Would somebody like to make a motion?
But, and, and I just wanted to say, if that's the route that we wanted to go, and I, and I talked with Derek, that I think it should be left as an option to Janet, how she may want that, whether that might be in, in that payment form or in a ROP IRA or another type of IRA for her own tax purposes. But I think that's something that needs to be agreeable with her, if that's what we wanted to approve. That's just how I think it should go down. I mean, that's, because it could, it could mess her tax bracket up as well, and.
And I don't, I think what would be appropriate is you approve. Because I, I, I don't think Janet needs to discuss her personal tax situation.
Right, none of that's.
But if you all approve a level of quote-unquote compensation, her and I can work on what that looks like and bring Gable into the mix if we need to. But yeah, what I really need is from you all is, you know, what, what amount do you feel is appropriate? Again, I've got pieces of data here.
Your five thousand dollars includes what you're projecting to, to get through the process? I mean, you're, you're, you're looking at certain hours you feel comp, you feel that that's where we're at, that that's.
And, and the one thing that Janet has told me when we've discussed this is, you know, be prudent with taxpayer dollars, like, so don't overestimate, and, and I certainly have not. I mean, it's fifty or sixty hours is probably, uh, you know, probably low. But yes, that, the five thousand is meant to cover that fifty or sixty additional hours, for sure.
I'll make a motion, then, that we approve a one-time stipend of five thousand dollars to our county clerk for helping with the budget, and just commend Janet for being the type of employee she is, that she has done that without coming and saying, hey, what am I going to get out of that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymar.
Yes, and thank you. Certainly is an odd year. The players have changed, the rules have changed, and it's kind of uncharted waters as far as budgeting's concerned. That brings us to staff reports.
Yeah, uh, while, while we're talking about the budget, Joy and I, as well as Janet, have worked to put together a proposed schedule. And I, I want to read some dates to you to make sure that you're okay with that. There's really only a couple left, but, um, today, we plan on disseminating the individual worksheets back to the elected officials and the department heads, basically for their final review, to make sure that before they come before the board, they are completely okay and understanding of everything on there. We're asking for their approval by June fifth. On the sixth, Joy will print those budget books. So, I would ask that the board, hopefully, you know, the meeting on the seventh, we can disseminate those printed books out to each of you. And then I'm proposing that the budget meetings between the board and the department heads occur on the fourteenth and fifteenth, which would give you all a week with the budget books to go over them, approach me and or Janet with any questions. We've reached out to Rodney, and those dates work fine with him. That gives him plenty of time to do what he needs to do.
Looks good to me. I don't have, know of anything that I have on those dates.
That good for me also. I'm open.
Commissioner Renault, is that?
I can make that work.
On those dates, and, and we'll have to set a schedule. And it seems like, feedback I've gotten was that last year, and it didn't take two full days. But do you want lunch here? Do you want us to have a lunch for you all? Or you, would you rather have an hour to decompress and go take care of yourself? How, how do you want us to handle that?
Lunch sounds good to me.
We can work through it. We'll get it.
We talked about the chamber handling, the visitor's guide, and with regard to tourism, that will be the topic of an upcoming study session because we're just getting the bones in place. I mean, you guys are going to have to provide a lot of flesh and blood with that. So, know that that is on the horizon. The employee barbecue, which the commissioners traditionally attend and cook and pass, is not this Friday, but next Friday, so the ninth. I would ask that each of you try and attend that.
What time you want us here?
Joy, what time do you want?
Probably by eleven.
They've generally came earlier than that to get the grill going and stuff, so I think, I think we've had you guys here about nine-thirty before, so we can get the grill going, you guys have in the past started the grill and got it all going, so.
You're going to have a grill? I think we used somebody else's grill.
We will have a grill.
We've used one of the banks.
Is it the banks? Okay, so it's one of the wood fires, it takes a while to get it going.
I believe Barvist let us use it last year.
And that will be here, very good. I don't have anything else for you today, so.
You want to discuss tax sale?
Um, sure, I have recently, and recently as in in the last week, in fact, I don't believe I even had it, I think it came last Thursday, I have received a list of all of the delinquent properties, the new delinquent properties, as well as the properties that the county formally entered into a pay plan with and whose owners have since ceased making payments. And looking around locally, I, I reached out to a local law firm who could handle that for us, unfortunately, due to conflicts, we were unable to make that happen, wasn't comfortable, unfortunately, it's just, I am very particular about avoiding conflicts of interest, avoiding the perception of conflicts of interest, and it's, it's a very small community, and so I've worked a lot with, well, his name's Brad Finkeldie, he's with Stevens and Brand out of Lawrence, they represent not only Douglas County, but the Baldwin School District, a lot of government entities, they have, it's my understanding, a special government rate that they charge, because they're cognizant of, you know, they're being funded with taxpayer dollars, and that's my understanding, their philosophy is they, they don't try to make a, a huge profit off of the taxpayers, so there's a, a rate for that. I am inclined to get the attorney who is going to be handling it, his name's Jeff Hyman, prior to entering into any kind of formal engagement letter, getting him down here just to meet you all and discuss it, but he is the attorney who does the tax sales up there, there will be no learning curve for him, generally, tax sales in Douglas County, given the fact that Lawrence sits right in the middle of it, are more demanding than what would be seen here, I think it's a good fit, so, but I would take any feedback you have, any feedback whatsoever, and my expectation is that he will come to help.
Do we have very many properties in this category that we're talking about?
But we currently do, yeah, particularly when you add in properties that have ceased making payments, now, typically what happens is the first step in a tax sale is sending out a demand letter, and you'd be surprised how quickly a lot of these owners can come up with the money to pay them when they get that demand letter, so a large percentage of them will probably pay the delinquent taxes at least enough to get off of that list, so the amount that we end up trying to foreclose on, I, it typically is not, you know, not a large volume of homes, but without having that list in front of me, I, I'm not sure what your amount will be.
Derek, would that compensation for those services then come out of that same budget line item for the administrator counselor? Or other legal fees, or?
Yeah, we would have to look at that, and obviously, that is information that prior to entering into any kind of engagement letter, I would have a very thorough answer for, that is one area that it could come out of, but I, I also don't think you would necessarily have to, so, but I would drill that down and, and have the best, I mean, the best place for that to come.
Sounds like with his experience, he would know approximately exactly how many hours it's going to take to do these types of things.
And I, I won't, I won't enter into an engagement, hey, I won't do it without it being in front of you, and we will have an estimate.
Sure.
I believe will be pretty accurate.
Right.
Prior to doing anything on.
Well, it's an important thing to, to keep the tax rolls up to date, and I'd certainly be interested in talking to this firm and hearing what they have to say.
Very good, well, I will make that happen.
Upcoming event, we have a meeting, our next meeting is the seventh, any more comments? Sheriff's not here. Guess we better get to it.
Dust control started yesterday, and we should complete covering up the white paint that Rick noticed on all fifty, probably today.
Anything? I guess we have commissioners' comment board reports, sorry, I skipped that.
I haven't been to any meetings, but I would like to say that this weekend, Jay Hawker Days at Williamsburg starts, they'll have Friday, they have a fish fry, and then Saturday, they have some things at the park, and I think they do a breakfast maybe Sunday morning, just want to put it out there and say that, that kind of kicks off our small cities and the county fairs and so forth, so, put it out there to the public, get out and support them and enjoy them.
Rick, is that, is there anything at Jay Hawker Days that would take the interest of a four-year-old, or they're going to kind of show?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I'm actually being serious, like, I, I, I'm not sure what Jay Hawker Days entails, I've never been there, so.
It's pretty good listening, what, the paper or the shop? Yeah, there's, that kind of lists hour by hour, you know, the events going on, pretty interesting.
They don't have rides and so forth, they quit doing that a few years ago, that didn't pan out really well, so.
The parade's fun for lots of sugar high for them.
Is there a lot for a four-year-old? There's a lot of open room to turn them loose and let them run.
I haven't been to any meetings either, so.
Nor have I, all right, if there's nothing else, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we adjourn.